Good morning, Commissioners and Madam Chair. We are ready to go. Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Fai, are you with us? All right, over to you, Madam Chair.
Yes, I'm here.
Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the work session of March 8, 2022. This is Chair Catherine Harrington, and with us this morning, we have Commissioners Pam Treese, Nafisa Fai, and Roy Rogers. Commissioner Willie texted me late last night and said he has a breakfast event this morning and hopes to join us at 8:45. The first item on the work session agenda today is Board and Leadership Communication. Which Commissioner would like to go first? Watch out, Commissioner Treese, you're not muted. So does that mean anything?
Not really, but I'm ready. It means that I've never good with my mute off button. Last week was a relatively, or this week was relatively short week for me because I took Friday and Monday off. But I couple different things. Tonight is CPO one meeting, and it's focused on Shackelford Road. I've been talking with Councilor Juan Carlos Gonzalez. He's going to be there tonight as well. And I will be supported by LUT there. The issue comes down to the fact that there are several people in that area that would like to see the extension of Shackelford Road. And there are many limitations to getting there. So that's going to be the discussion. And I did have a briefing meeting with Councilor Gonzalez this last week. I also had a briefing meeting, my regular briefing meeting with Alroque. And there's a story that I would, oh, wait a minute, I just got a notice from Stephen Roberts. Tonight is the Cornell Improvement Project. CPO seven is Shackelford. Sorry, I've got East Coast brain going. Thanks, Stephen. So correction, correction. But I do want to tell you about a briefing that I had from Alroque. You know, we oftentimes hear a lot of negatives about what's happening with gun violence, whether, you know, it's in our larger regional area. But I wanted to share this story with you because we don't always hear the good news. So on March 27, around noon, a suspect robbed a Sherwood gas station and held an attendant at gunpoint. Sherwood detectives determined the suspect lived in a trailer in Tuolatin, and the tactical negotiations team and the crisis negotiation unit arrived as backup for the Sherwood and the Tuolatin police. They are inter-agency teams that, in addition to Tuolatin and Sherwood, include Hillsborough and Beaverton Police Departments. After six hours of negotiation, including playing a recorded message from family and phone calls from the family, the team was able to get the individual to leave the trailer, and no community members, suspects, or officers were injured. And I just wanted to share the fact that this is a success story that we don't often hear, especially when there is, you know, guns involved, frankly. So I just wanted to share that with you. This week, I have a PAB board meeting, and I'm also getting a briefing about the John Quincy Adams House. It's an organization that is working to restore the house that's right, it's just off Cornell in the Cedar Mill area. So I'm meeting with them to talk about what their goals and objectives are. I have a meeting with Gina Nichol from AOC, and then I also have a Community Action Board meeting, and I'm meeting with Eileen Kravitz from the Tuolatin Hills Park Recreation Foundation. So that's my report.
Would any other Commissioners like to contribute anything? Commissioner Rogers?
Okay, and yesterday I had a ODOT meeting. I was asked to be on the Connect Oregon, which is a larger state committee to look at projects. I was on the Subcommittee for Region One, and said my schedule is a little tight right now, so they have other applicants, but I'll be an alternate to that statewide group. One thing I was going to ask you, Tanya, and if the sheriff was on, I'd ask him as well. When I was a kid, I'm going to reminisce back a long time ago, we had a lot of drills in regard to nuclear attacks, to issues in which we had, if you can believe, bomb shelters and all kinds of things. I don't want to be an alarmist, and I'm certainly saying we have to live our lives, but we have a lot of preparation for natural disasters. I, for one, and again, I'm not being an alarmist, believe that we are not well-prepared for events in the world that might be occurring. And so I'd like to know what, if anything, we are doing in terms of understanding that that's a disaster like anything else. And so it would be interesting to know if, as you see getting reported out of certain Russian newspapers, in fact, they're, one of their independent news agencies resigned the other day, and her comment was that, don't be fooled. I mean, there's going to be a much larger conflict. So again, not alarming anybody, but I think it would be well-advised to be prepared, not only with how we would continue, and that would be our agencies such as Water and Sumer and others to continue operations, but how we'd go about sheltering, protecting, and dealing with all those kinds of emergencies. It's, I sound like an alarmist, but I think, you know, hopefully rational minds and goodwill people come to their senses. But if they don't, I think we need to have some understanding of what our emergency plans might be. So, Tanya, I think it would be wholess to have something in mind, just like everything else. And so I would love to hear from you, and I'll talk with the sheriff separately to understand that contingency plans, or what those contingency plans might be. So on that gloomy note, that is my report. I've got some other readings, several of them, but I think that's probably important to talk about.
Commissioner Rogers, I can respond that we do have active planning in place. And we are planning to, when the Board does come back in person, to do safety training. And we will incorporate what your ask is in that safety training for Board members. Moving forward, we do plan to have annual safety training for Board members, as well as ensure that staff have access to that information as well. But we'll provide further information for you in the near future.
I would just like to ensure that all Commissioners are aware that our staff updated the Emergency Operations Guide in February of last year. So we might want to take a look at that as well. Commissioner Fai, is there anything you'd like to share with us today in Leadership Communication?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Harrington. Good morning, everyone. If you missed it, last week, we had Dr. Sabata and Dr. Townley and Mr. Ferry from Portland State University's Homelessness Research and Action Collaborative. They presented a roundtable, and they focused on their research on the evaluation and best practices of the POD Village model that's been employed across the country as an alternative shelter model. They conducted a mixed method study within and across established villages and their neighborhoods in the Portland metropolitan area. The information obtained from their research can help inform public policy and identify best practices for developing villages. It was really a great presentation, and I'm really very thankful that they were able to come and join us. And I encourage everyone listening here to check out our website and watch the YouTube recording. Washington County has a goal to provide 250 year-round shelter beds to serve people experiencing homelessness as they work to achieve long-term establishing housing in our community. I wanted to lift up that staff are hosting community engagement sessions on March 10 from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and March 12 from 11:00 a.m. and 12:30 p.m. That folks can attend to provide their input and learn more about what Washington County is doing. I also wanted to lift up that Spanish interpretation will be available at these community engagements, and everyone can register on our website. As a Board member of the Five Oaks Museum, I wanted to highlight that their breakthrough exhibition, sorry. One of my, should I call them, my little colleagues at home wants to connect their little gadgets to their internet. So it's, sorry about the interruptions. But as I was saying, as a Board member of the Five Oaks Museum, I wanted to highlight that their breakthrough exhibition, this is Kalapuiyan land, has traveled to Hidden Creek Community Center in Hillsborough. It is a community center's, it's that community center's first exhibition, and it's on view from April 2021 to April 2022. So if you have not yet seen it, there are just a few weeks left, if you want to see that, and I encourage everyone to check it out. And that concludes my update, Chair Harrington. May I turn it back to you?
Thank you. A lot of wonderful things going on in our community, including tomorrow evening, we have our first quarter Board of Commissioners Town Hall, and it will be really exciting and interesting to hear about the equity tool and its use. And I must say, I just noticed last night one of the videos to watch in preparation of that. So I have some catching up to do before tomorrow night, so that I've done my homework, just like our community members have had the opportunity to in advance of meeting with us. I have just a very simple item to share today. Last Wednesday was the Fair Board Meeting, and the OSU Extension Office reported that they have hired a new 4-H program manager named Alan Taggart. He comes to us from elsewhere in the country and brings best practices and experience to lead that program here in Washington County. So, great stuff. So Commissioner Willie will be joining us later, so we'll come back to him later today. We have leadership communication, and just to make sure it's been highlighted, so we get to it, we also have three draft items to try and get to before we have a time-certain work session item on the Advisory Council on Racial Equity Charter Review. So we'll turn it over to Ms. Angie. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. I'm pleased to announce that we have no COVID cases within the workforce. This is the first time since July 2021. So this, I feel a great deal of celebration for our employees. Going forward, with the expiration of the COVID leave policy, human resources will not be tracking our COVID cases because we don't have the mechanism in place to do so. So thank you for celebrating with me because that is exciting news. The CDC has a new way of measuring the impact of COVID-19 on communities that takes into account both case trends and the strain on our hospital systems. Under this new measure, the CDC placed Washington County at a low level of risk. So that's also good news. So what that means is not only in our workforce, but our community cases have dropped very quickly. Chair, you had mentioned the budget. Town Hall staff are looking forward to supporting your Board's Town Hall this week. Board members, feel free to convene on the Zoom link at 5:45. The event does start at 6:00 p.m. The Board will get a detailed email today, which will include information about the breakout rooms, which each of the Commissioners will be hosting, and your staff assistant or a staff member from OEICE will be supporting you in those breakout rooms and also taking notes. I do want to call the Board's attention to Budget Background Video Series that our team has put together. That information is available to the community on our county budget webpage. Each of the budget background videos are very short. They're a minute or just over a minute in length. And what this is intended to do is short, in essence, soundbites, so that the information is digestible and community members can go to the question that they're interested in relative to our budget and look further. We do expect to really listen to community and continue to build out our video communication tools as a county. I want to provide an update from our Juvenile Department. Juvenile has been awarded an important grant, which supports a system reform effort to address racial and ethnic disparities and develop strategies to make lasting changes. This grant in program is called Breakthrough Series Collaborative. The program is provided through the Center for Juvenile Justice Reform at Georgetown University. Team of county of core stakeholders in Washington County have been meeting to prepare for a trip to Georgetown University for a week-long learning event at the end of April. Core stakeholders include our Juvenile Department Director, Assistant Director, Manager from Latino Network, a Manager from the Oregon Youth Authority, Supervisor from Boys and Girls Club, Representative from OEICE, a Hillsborough Police Sergeant, a young adult who is a former youth in the system, and a mother of a formal youth system. So we really look forward to learning together as we look to improve our system of service in juvenile. At this point, I would like to make an introduction. So Clerk Moss, if you can promote Daniel Nava. And as Daniel's transitioning from an attendee to a panelist, I'd like to introduce Daniel, who is a new staff member to our team, and he is the Senior Staff Assistant. Daniel just started on Monday. And Daniel has nearly 18 years of experience in political and public service, and possesses a broad range of skills that make him ideally suited to serve in this dynamic role. I have really enjoyed my time getting to know Daniel, and an important note, I believe Daniel has watched all of the board meetings, work sessions, and roundtables for almost, I think, this entire calendar year. So kudos to you, Daniel. And I will say he took notes as well. So Daniel, would you like to say a few words?
Sure, I'd love to say a few words. Just thank you for the welcome, and just looking forward to supporting Chair Harrington and working for, pursuing the endeavors of the county. Through watching all these videos and getting to know the staff and the Commissioners and all the hard work that they're doing for the county, I am just privileged to work with such a high caliber team of people who are showing results and having great outcomes for the county, and it's just a pleasure to work with everybody, and I can't wait to continue that work and be a part of the team. So thank you for the introduction, and just can't wait to get started.
Thank you, and thank you for being here, Daniel. And that concludes my weekly update.
Well, I forgot to mention Ms. Angie, and I want to give appreciation to our finance team. In preparation for the Audit Committee meeting next week, I put my nose deep into the Washington County and Clean Water Services CAFERS. So our team has been working so hard, such a lean, practically, not anemic, but there's another word I can't, I've lost it at the moment, but team, to keep to strict guidelines, best practices, and timelines. So I'm really grateful. They are clean audits, which is exactly what you hope for. But in this era of pretty much unprecedented federal funding that we've had, both with the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan Act, our team has worked really hard here at Washington County, but also at Clean Water Services, to not only get those dollars into action for the benefit of our community, but also make sure that doing so adheres to all of the rules, not only for the specific legislation, but also for the general accounting standards. So thank you very much to the team, and you'll hear more after the Audit Committee does its work. Thank you. Mr. Carr, you're on deck next.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chair Harrington. I just want to also welcome Daniel, specifically to the Tie Wearing Club. It's nice to see another person with a necktie on, and Mark, someday, maybe you as well, will get you there. The only thing I have to report is, as the Commission directed last week, we have put on the agenda for next week a change to the Commissioners' rules to allow for continuation of remote participation and to adjust the time for work sessions to 9:00 a.m. And you'll be voting on that on March 15 at your regular board meeting. Thank you, and thank you specifically to Clerk Moss, who did most of the heavy lifting on that item.
Thank you. And over to you, Mr. Jockers.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and members of Clean Water Services Board Directors. I am sitting in today as Diane is moving into her new house. Actually, I think she's having someone else move things, but she's there to inspect. I also want to join Tanya in telling you that we too have zero new cases of COVID and zero exposures, and we have no employees that are out for any reason any longer. And just like the county, actually, I can't tell you the last time that that's been the case, but it's certainly been more than a year or up to a year since that's happened, probably last July, similar to you all. So we're very pleased by that. Thank you, Chair, for the compliment on the annual comprehensive financial report. I will certainly pass on your compliments to our CFO, Kathy Leader, who I'm sure, I imagine you will probably see tomorrow evening. Other than that, that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Wonderful. So we have three items to go over. The first is a proclamation brought to us by Commissioner Rogers, a proclamation in support of Ukraine and pledge. Commissioner Roger, oh, welcome, Commissioner Willie. We're just going, starting to go over our three items, and we'll come back to you after that. Commissioner Rogers, is there anything you would like to say about today, the proclamation?
I don't think so. I appreciated what the proclamation last week did, and that was to start us on a path in support of Ukraine. I think what the proclamation does, and by the way, it was vetted through not only Tanya's office, but Tom's as well, and purchasing. So it went through the entire organizations. It says a couple of things. One, I personally, and I know our organization does as well, has no ill will towards the Russian people. This is not Russian population. This is a person in charge who is certainly not the person that this world is particularly wanting to emulate. So it's not against the Russian folks. It is, it's part of Ukraine, and the thrust of it is to say that we will not do business with any Russian business. That means that they're in Russia, housed in Russia. We will not do business with the Russian government. We will not invest in any kind of investments that would be holding Russian investments. That would be all sorts of investments, I guess, but I've understood from Tanya that we've vetted that as well, and there isn't any, anything that we know of, our investment brokers know of, that would be Russian-oriented. So I'm deeply saddened that we have to do this, and deeply saddened the state of the world, and deeply saddened that people are being killed and oppressed, but we need to stand up and say that. As far as some of our city colleagues, I've had a conversation with a couple mayors who are more than delighted to also be in support of some kind of resolution. So it's much broader than that. So with that, I'll just stop. I think it speaks for itself. Thank you for Julie, too. Forgot, she did so much work. Yeah, thank you.
So colleagues, now's a good time to ask any questions or any wording changes, if you have them. Otherwise, this will be on our agenda for adoption next Tuesday, March 15. Go ahead, Commissioner Fai.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Can you hear me? Okay. Minor change request here. The last bullet point where it says whereas, the last whereas, boycotting all Russian-made goods. I think we need to specify in Russia, or because I don't want this to seem like an attack on grocery owners, Russian grocery owners or store owners in Washington County. I myself shop at one, so I want to make sure that we're not attacking our Washington County Russian residents here. So I don't know how we would specify Tom, but we're talking about investment overseas, foreign affairs, and things like that, not internal affair, not specific to Washington County. So how do we specify that? Because when I read this, effectively boycotting all Russian-made goods, that means I would stop shopping at my favorite Russian store, and that's not the intent of this resolution.
So would it be okay if if staff could confirm that they understand how this wording affects that? I mean, we've certainly also seen on the national news that there are various restaurants, stores, that, you know, have Russian in the name, even though they're owned by American citizens, and the employees, though they may be of Eastern Europe descent, they're Americans. So they're not owned by the Russian government or any Russian company. It's Russian from the standpoint of heritage, if I could refer to it as that. So can we just make note of that and ask staff to develop some different language? I see Mr. Carr shaking his head, so.
Yes, of course. You'll act on this at a board meeting, probably on the 15th, so we can draft up some alternative language and work with Commissioner Rogers to make sure it conforms to his intent.
Terrific. Yep, and run it by Commissioner Fai, too. That would be great, I think.
Of course, of course.
Any other thoughts or requests? Great. Thank you for bringing that lens, Commissioner Fai. Okay, so we'll move on to the two letters. These are letters that were in response to our conversations at our meetings last week. Mr. Roberts, would you like to walk us through, or it may be as simple as, since it encapsulates our discussion, just asking for a thumbs up on the one for the, oh, boy, the Investment and Jobs Act, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act.
That's a lot of syllables.
Yeah. Any questions on that letter? Or comments? I know I'm thumbs up with it. Got at least three, four. Commissioner Fai, are you okay with it?
Yeah, I'm okay with it, but I've been thinking about, like, besides the first bullet point, I feel like we're not, because people are asking. I feel like we're not, because people are asking specific things about the IIJA for OTC, and I'm not sure we're really being, but I'm okay as it is, Stephen, but I would have been nice to, from my understanding from last time's conversation, I thought we would hone in on specific, like preserve existing bridges. I think people are calling out, like where, which bridge should be prioritized? Like where in Washington County should we actually would have, would have been nice to call out a certain need? But other than that, I'm okay submitting this.
Okay. And I would say we did, we heard, heard some interest in having more specificity about some of the streets for the urban arterials or not urban arterials here in our community. So we did add those. And if.
Yeah, I saw that. Good job.
Yeah. And if the board would prefer, we certainly could add a couple, a couple of bridge candidates if there's an interest in having some additional specificity. But I think the idea was to keep it at a relatively high level at this point.
Does keeping it at a high level give us the flexibility? And I guess that's, that would be the issue without, I understand Nafisa's point, but I also wonder if we need that flexibility right now.
Yeah, at this point, really, the purpose is to try to just set a general direction for how large buckets of funding are going to be allocated to, you know, to which areas. And there will be a lengthy process of actually establishing specific projects in the 2427 State Transportation Improvement Program. But there will be more, more bites at the apple.
Chair, you're on mute. Thank you. We're all set on that one. The next letter is on the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rulemaking Process.
Yes. And again, just a few amendments to try to capture some of the input that we heard from the board last week. And the key points all remain essentially the same. But we did try to add a little bit more specificity around some of the concerns around specifically implementing our comprehensive plan updates as well as development code and just trying to provide just a bit more specificity on some of the specific concerns there.
Go ahead, Commissioner Rogers.
I, I thought it was a very balanced letter. The only issue, Stephen, that struck me is when you start talking about great streets. Is that going to put us in any, I, I know it's, those of us in the metropolitan area, we like that. But how do you feel that plays in a much broader audience when you have a state with, with, you know, a lot of different needs? And this is not a huge sum of money. I mean, everybody thinks it is, but we could, we could spend it in Washington County without even blinking along the state. Do you think that we ought to have language that says we, we certainly encourage partners in the state to recognize our need for those sorts of activities? Shouldn't say activities, but, but investments are, I'm trying to, trying to pull them in so that they say, we, we understand your difference. And so I can see why you'd need it instead of saying that's our preference and that has to be higher in priority. I, I want the state to come with us, not work against us. Does that make sense, Stephen, what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. And really, the Great Streets is intended to be sort of a statewide program. So you could have a main street in a smaller town, you know, that needs investments. And so it's, it's not intended to be focused necessarily in the, in the Portland metro area or even in the larger cities per se. So it could, could be spread out across the state and where you've got a lot of highways that run through some smaller towns.
How do we do? And I don't want to pursue this too much, but when you get into the more rural parts of the state and you talk with folks there, I mean, they, they don't use the same terminology and they look at things. How do we make it so it's inclusive so that they would support it? I would like to wish that's a great concept, you know, and they see that nexus that you're talking about of their local town streets. And maybe you think it's done. I, I, you know, I'm not trying to nitpick at all, but I just want to bring them along so that we have supporters. People know.
No, it's a good point. And I, I think I'm trying to find it, but I believe the definition of great streets, I think, does actually include some specificity around the intent, as I described it earlier, that it is intended to cover a broad variety of needs in different parts of the state.
Okay.
Yeah. And I do think, you know, to your point, you know, this gets back to the idea of having a balanced scenario. We just have a lot of different kinds of needs. And, and again, throughout the state, the needs are going to vary quite a lot. And so having the balanced scenario just seems to provide a, you know, win-win-wins hopefully for folks around the state.
Commissioner Rogers' question brought me back to paragraph two in the, starting at the end of the first line. However, we're still very concerned with the top-down approach to these prescriptive rules, lack of funding for local government implementation, and aggressive timelines for adoption and implementation. And, you know, then it goes on with the subsequent sentence. I agree with all of that. You know, it's, we have this incredible pile of planning requirements that and I like plans and I like clear requirements, but it's really become quite arduous. And I'm concerned not only about having funding to implement those plans, but given the investment of money and time to create this plan and then money and time to create the next plan, right? All these different plans and it's taking even more money to develop plans at the county levy in, level in partnership with our 13 cities here in Washington County to go through this. And I'm worried about the state providing funds to support those planning efforts. Right? Just like they did back in the Senate Bill 100 days in requiring all communities to come up with community plans. So I can't stress enough. You know, the region spoke loud and clear during the development of the Climate Smart Communities work that the, the vision and promise of those plans and that very expensive planning process was reliant upon the state providing funding to support transit, especially our most promising technique as well as subsequent work. Now that knowledge was incorporated into House Bill 2017. But that was a start and we still need to make the Southwest Corridor a reality. Right? And that's even without these rules. So you know, I don't want to slow down getting this letter done. But Commissioner Rogers' point about bringing the state along and making sure we have that partnership. And I think we need to send this letter not only to DLCD, but to the entire Washington County State Legislative Delegation. Because their enabling of things is having a big impact on all of our local communities. So.
Yeah. And I think that's one of the interesting challenges here. So, so to your point about the funding, that, that's the point of that first bulleted paragraph is really to just emphasize the importance of providing funding. Yeah. So.
Yes, sorry.
Absolutely. No, no, that, that is absolutely one of the big concerns. And so I'm, I'm taking a note that we'll CC the, our, our state legislative delegation here. And I think because these are all pursuant to an executive order, the legislature really hasn't been engaged. And, and again, remember, the governor's executive order was really driven by legislative inaction back in 2020, I guess it was, 2019. And so really trying to take, take executive action. And so I do think you're right. It, it will be hopefully something that legislators would support, providing additional funding to help, help do the implementation. I think everybody agrees it's a great idea. Concept's good. We just have lots of concerns about the implementation of it.
Sorry for taking time.
No, no, it's a, that's, that's exactly, I mean, so many concerns, but that's definitely a big one.
Yep.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other thoughts on this letter or does everybody thumbs up? Okay. We're all set on that one. So that takes care of the three items. So we have a few minutes before we start our time-certain topic. Commissioner Willie, welcome. We've gone through our Commissioner Communications. Is there anything you'd like to contribute today?
No, I, I, maybe just a couple of things, but thank you. I was at a breakfast meeting this morning, so so had to run a little bit late. Just a Fair Board meeting last week and we went over the financial reports, of course, of the, of the fair and then talked about 4H and certainly participation in the upcoming July Fair. The interesting thing to note is that, and I believe I have my, my numbers correctly, that in 2019, we had about 600 kids in 4H. And now we have about 200 kids. So it's a program that's really going to take some effort to rebuild and certainly I want to encourage their participation in the fair. So I, I certainly think that Leah is doing a great job with that. Rachel Fuller also was introduced to the group. She's now joined, obviously, this is in her portfolio. So thank you, Rachel, for joining us and in that meeting. Also, yesterday I went to the swearing-in ceremony and that's always fun to do that, to see recognition of certainly our Sheriff's Department employees, some of them for life-saving efforts, some of them for promotions. And it's good that the sheriff does that, does a good job. Families come in and participate in that as well. So that's always a, a fun ceremony. And so thank you, Sheriff, for always making that a, a special event. This week I've got GPI Board Meeting and COPAC and then, and certainly the West Side Pitch Competition, which is an entrepreneurial competition for, of course, pitching new workforce businesses, I guess. And so Mayor Callaway and I will be participating in that next week. So I think that's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. So next we'll move on to the first of six really meaty topics here for today's work session. And this is on ACRI, our Advisory Council on Racial Equity. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Tillman because we have several guest speakers with us today. Take it away, Ms. Tillman.
Okay, wonderful. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Board. It's lovely to be with you today and to share with you about the draft charter for the Advisory Council on Racial Equity. We call it ACRE. I hear you call it ACRI, but you can do it as you like, but we do have several presenters here to share on the work that we've been doing for several months now. We have Ashley Horn, our Equity Policy Manager for the Office of Equity Inclusion and Community Engagement. Many of you know John L. Bell. He is the Principal for Espousal Strategies and helped to facilitate our community partner meetings. We have Tony DeFalcow, the Executive Director of the Latino Network, Nate McCoy, the Executive Director of the National Association of Minority Contractors, the Oregon Chapter, and Kenichi Onyagusi, the Executive Director of the Professional Business Development Group. This is a small subset of the community partners that we engaged in developing the draft charter. And we're really happy that you will hear from them through the presentation, through the majority of the presentation. So at this point, I think we can share the slides and I will lead it off and then I will turn it over to John L. Okay, so as I mentioned, we're here to bring you a draft charter for the Advisory Council on Racial Equity for your review and input. You can go to the next slide, please. And just as a refresher, in the February 2020 Equity Resolution, there was a specific call out for a Communities of Color Advisory Board to be established for Washington County. And we have since renamed that Communities of Color Advisory Board to the Advisory Council on Racial Equity. And then in July 2021, when you adopted our Equity Diversity and Inclusion Strategic Action Plan, that also had a specific call out for the Advisory Council on Racial Equity. And so since then, we've been working on it and I'm going to turn it over to John L. To talk a little bit more specifically about our timeline that got us here today.
Great. Well, thank you, Chief Equity Officer Tillman and Chair Harrington, members of the board. Once again, John L. Bell with Espousal Strategies, just great to be with you, almost two years from when you all have worked diligently to pass a resolution. So how wonderful to be in front of you. So next slide, please. Just a reminder, which is amazing to see all the progress that has been made in February 2022 is when this board adopted the county's first equity resolution. In February of 2021, we had an opportunity of launching your Internal Equity Leadership Council, which has really served as a chief writer, I would say, internal to your organization of really advancing your, your EDI efforts. July of 2021, the board adopted the Equity Strategic Action Plan. August of 2021, you launched Advisory Council on Racial Equity Co-Creation Committees. And we're going to talk a little bit more in terms of the, the results of that work. March of 2022, we had a number of work sessions to establish ACRE. And just a shout out, as Latricia indicated earlier, to all of the community-based partners in Washington County who worked diligently, hand in glove with the county to offer the recommendation that, that you'll see today. April of 2022, the board action to establish ACRE. May 2022, there'll be work sessions to present, propose inaugural acre membership. June of 2022, the hope is to have board approval of an inaugural acre membership. And then, of course, July 2022 is when we would like to launch Advisory Council on Racial Equity. So a short timeline with a lot of work over a period of time. Obviously, there's a lot of other elements that occurred within that timeline, including something that is not small, which is staffing up and hiring your first Chief Equity Officer. Next slide, please. Just a little bit of an overview of who's really been working with Latricia. And I had the opportunity of serving as facilitator. It was really a coal production, a co-creation with community experts. We had four planning meetings with community partners and they were very engaging. We assessed other structures. We had really in-depth conversations in terms of, from their perspectives, what would they like this particular group to prioritize? And then we had a conversation in terms of the priorities, what priority recommendations for the acre structure. Here are just a list of some of the organizations who've participated. And of course, you all will recognize them all, but just a robust cross-section of organizations who came. Every meeting, it was really impressive to see, in particular, so many executive directors rolling up their sleeves. These are members of our community who are very busy leading and running their own organizations. But because of their dedication to this mission, made the time for not But because of their dedication to this mission, made the time for not very short meetings. We had about three-hour meetings. And so just a shout out to them. With that, Latricia, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, so I believe next up is Tony DeFalcow. And we can go to the next slide.
Thank you, Latricia, and good to see you, Chair Harrington, members of the commission. My name is Tony DeFalcow. I use he/him/L pronouns. I currently serve as the Executive Director of Latino Network. And I also serve as the Chair of the Board of the Coalition of Communities of Color. And I just want to preface my slide by saying thank you. Thank you for investing in this meaningful opportunity for communities of color to come together with a broad set of partners to create a meaningful pathway to building in diversity, equity, inclusion into the county's various structures, strategic plan, legislative agenda, policies, programmatic priorities, and departmental priorities. And really importantly, to engage with our communities to establish that external accountability and ensure that those community needs are prioritized and continue to be prioritized by the county. Next slide, please. So the Advisory Council on Racial Equity would advise the county's Board of Commissioners and county leadership on the advancement of equity, diversity, and inclusion, best and promising practices. This authority could include approval prior to board, like adoption of things like the strategic plan, budget, and legislative agenda. And this would be an ongoing and permanent body. And I'll just close my quick remarks here and slides by really applauding your staff. They did a fabulous job of very efficient but meaningful opportunities to engage and develop this very robust package that's in front of you today. Thank you.
Great. Next is Kenichi Onyagusi, and we can advance to slide seven.
Good morning. My name is Kenichi Onyagusi, and I am the Executive Director of Professional Business Development Group, PBDG. We are a trade association of minority and certified DVE firms in construction. I just thrilled to be in the space. Good morning to Chair Harrington and the rest of the commissioners. Thank you for all of the good work in this work. The ACRE was really able to work on defining, on defining the scope. And to what Tony had mentioned, we're looking at being able to really help shape some of the county's priorities around the strategic plan, legislative agenda, policy review, departmental priorities, and programmatic priorities. What this means for you is that when you have work that needs to be done, you have a community, a body of people that will be able to support you in that work, that will be able to ensure that the county is really centering equity. The hiring of, of Director Tillman is really indicative of the county's commitment to equity. And I'd love for this group to really view this work, the scope of work outlined here, as a tool and, and the, the community of people that will be supporting you as champions in helping you advance what you have stated as a goal for the county. The intent is that the work plan is biannual or biennial and will, will touch on every aspect of, of the work that's being done at the county. And just in closing, I'm excited for Washington County. As a resident of Washington County, this means a lot to me personally, to see this work advancing. I've, over the last year or so, been working with the governor's office through the RJC work that's being done there. And it's great to see my county really put focus and emphasis on this work here. So thank you for the work and congratulations.
Great, thank you, Kenichi. Sorry for mispronouncing your last name. And Nate McCoy, you're up next, and we can move to the next slide.
Pleasure. Good morning, everybody. I'm Nate McCoy, Executive Director of the National Association of Minority Contractors, Oregon Chapter, also known as Namac Oregon. Good to see you, Commissioner Harrington and the other commissioners in Washington County. As mentioned by both Kenichi and Tony, it has taken a village to get to this point with leadership by Tricia Tillman and John L. Bell and some of the staff at the county to really realize this racial equity work that I think we need and is very paramount during these times of change and prosperity and healing and all combined into efforts to realize more impact economically and culturally specific for our communities across our counties. The process, we've been laying out the process. So wanted to kind of earmark some of the membership and what the process is entailing. First thing that we're going to be focusing on is comprising this group of primary community representatives in the county, both residents and community partners with lived experience around racial inequity, which don't have to really describe it as paramount. As my grandma used to say, those closest to the problem are closest to the solution. So we want to make sure that we center those voices. This council will also comprise of no more than fifteen members to make sure that we don't have too, too many cooks in the kitchen, but a fair amount that can certainly move an agenda with some consensus. I think we also are making sure that we have two key liaisons within Washington County's Board of Commissioners. We also will have a mix of representatives from the community-based organizations in the area, as well as at-large community members that want to support Washington County on this equity journey. We also will have representatives with racial equity expertise, as well as geographic and demographic diversity, which is, which is very huge. We will also convene under this joint leadership two co-chairs. And the way we are structuring the co-chair assignments is we will make sure that we have one representative from the County Board of Commissioners and one other co-chair that will represent the community. The co-chairs will serve for two terms. These members will also go through equity trainings, both the chairs as well as the general community committee. And then we will have either two terms of three years or three terms of two years with an option to extend for no more than a max of six-year commitment with this effort. And then I guess we will also tackle tracking and managing all of the members as, as best as we can from the beginning to the end, and then staggering these assignments so that we don't have folks dropping off of the committee at the same time, that we make sure that this council and this body has a good, sustainable group to, to move the needle on these efforts. If we can go to the next slide, please. And then, as I said, we were kind of going through some of the process. One of the things to note is the co-chairs will facilitate the council meetings and work with the Washington County staff liaisons to establish the agenda and some of the strategic planning efforts with the work plan. And then the Office of Equity Inclusion and Community Engagement staff will serve as subject matter experts responsible for overall design and implementation of the countywide community plan. And I think one, one key indicator here that's not really in the talking points, but being able to directly talk with the council is very important. I think our group wanted to make sure that the leadership heard from us, that we didn't have necessarily just messengers sending the message, that we could talk directly to you all, which in some ways does not happen a lot on many of these committees. It almost feels like you're a sounding board, but you're not really talking to the key influencers. So we really appreciate that equity lens perspective of giving power to the community as much as you all make decisions on our behalf. So we really appreciate it. As I said, again, it takes a village and I'm so thankful to be a contributor from Namac's perspective, working across the board of all of our counties to move the needle on economics for our businesses of color. So I will stop there and hand it back over to Latricia.
Great, thank you so much, Nate. And I just want to take a moment to especially appreciate our co-creation committee for the Advisory Council on Racial Equity. As you can see, they have a depth of expertise that is recognized and respected statewide. And I also want to appreciate Ashley Horn, our Equity Policy Manager, for helping to shepherd this process forward in partnership with John L. Bell and Amanda Garcia Snell, our Community Engagement Manager, who is also a part of the co-creation process. So it really has been a, a team effort and we definitely appreciate that. And in the next slide, this is the time where we want to turn it over to you for your input. As you'll note, in the agenda, of course, we did kind of a high-level overview here, but the actual draft of the charter is included in the board materials. And so given that this is just a touch point on the way to the creation of the Advisory Council on Racial Equity, we are very open to hearing your questions, comments, suggestions, et cetera. And so, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. And what an esteemed body this co-creation committee has been. And we're just so fortunate to have you join us today in presenting this to the full board. So board members, any questions or comments that you would like to share at this juncture about ACRE? Commissioner Treese, go ahead.
Well, good morning, everybody. And, you know, I, I think about looking at John L.'s timeline from February of twenty twenty to now. And it's incredible the amount of work that's been done. And I, I, just listening to your voices, I got chills. I mean, this is like the, the, the real deal. This is, this has gone from just, it's just followed the path that it needed to follow. So thank you so much to all of you for the, for the work that's been put in. I don't have any questions. I, I don't have any suggestions. I, I just wanted to share my voice and say how excited I am. And I know that, that, that view is shared by others. So thank you from the bottom of my heart for the work, the time, the effort, the passion to help us through this, along this pathway.
Thank you, Commissioner Treese. I share in your excitement. Commissioner Rogers, go ahead.
I would echo the comments about all the work. It certainly shows that people were engaged and passionate. I have a problem with part of the wording and I'll share what that is. I have supported consistently in this effort. But in slide six, where you have to have approval prior to certain activities occurring, this board is elected by citizens. And if they don't like how we perform, they unelect us. That's the way it works. And to have a condition that certain things have to go through you for approval before adoption, it's not how I see democracy. I certainly like the idea. It might just be the way I'm reading it, but I like the idea of going through the committee, review, recommendations, input, all of that is great. I have no problem, but we have a lot of varying committees at the county. And I always get concerned when there's a precondition that somebody has to prove something before we can approve it. So if that's the wording, I want to be upfront. I don't hide my intentions. I'm a very straightforward guy. I probably won't support the resolution unless there's some modification in there that clearly has us understand or me understand what the intent is. The intent is to review, advise, wonderful. I'm all with you. The intent is to give input, all with you. The intent is to have some board members involved, great. I agree with that as well. As far as the direction, I'm fine. As far as the strategic plan, I'm fine. I'm only saying it, it appears that there's some kind of filter, which we don't do with other committees. And so that's, that's my two cents where I'm at.
If, if I could draw our attention to the, not the summary slides, but the actual charter for the committee that was also included in the packet, that includes, it's a table form, purpose and goal, authority and duration. Authority and duration uses the word may vote, okay? Scope of work, make recommendations, advise, advise, advise. So this has not removed the board's authority at all. And in fact, the group examined other boards and commissions' structure. And just like we have boards on mental health and public health and public safety, this committee is also empowered to advise us. They are not a gate. Instead, they are a very rich body who we are attempting to empower to help us achieve the goals. So I, I would counsel us to not determine our position based upon the summary slides, but instead look at the actual material that we would be adopting. So that may help zero in on your concern, Commissioner Rogers. And so I'd like to turn it back over to Ms. Tillman and the group to see if I have missed some clarity that this document provides.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers, for your question and your comment, and Madam Chair, for the opportunity to respond. We did actually modify the language within the draft charter. And before I talk about that modification, what I want to highlight is that the group in the co-creation process was very clear that they don't want to be considered a rubber stamp or just a step in a process where people can be asked for feedback, but that feedback can be very easily disregarded and processes can move forward without incorporating that feedback or if there are concerns, without pausing to really consider and address those concerns. And I think that comes from the real experience that many leaders of color have, where their voices are invited to a conversation, but their feedback is not actually incorporated into the ultimate results of policy work. And so we did actually look at some other models where there is a stopping point in a process where racial equity lens could be applied. And if there are concerns about the impact of policy or program on racial equity, the, the opportunity would exist based on feedback from this advisory council to revise. We did actually change the language, though, from approve in advancement of board adoption to endorse, recognizing that that could be a concern, but also considered other commissions, like the Planning Commission, where there is an actual vote that is taken before a policy goes forward to the board. And so wanted to parallel that kind of authority so that it is codified that the importance of the community voice as it relates to racial equity. And happy to pause if other additional co-creation committee members want to speak.
Latricia, this was Tony DeFalcow again. Thank you. I think you stated really nicely a summary of what I heard as well from the broader co-creation committee of that desire to have a meaningful role in the board's development of policy, budgets, and so on relative to racial equity. And I'll, you know, what I'll say is I think, you know, what we've seen is consistent disinvestment in communities of color over the years. you know, what we've seen is consistent disinvestment in communities of color over the years and consistent ignoring, ignoring of, of what communities need. And that's really, you know, led to a broad body of work with the county that I'm really proud to be part of, that begins to reverse that trend. And I think we have much more work to do in front of us. And I believe that having this meaningful opportunity to engage along these processes, the more meaningful, the better, the more it is not a rubber stamp, as Latrice noted, the better, that you will have the sustained involvement from our communities to be that really critical support for the county to have these really good outcomes at the end of the day that lift all boats. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments or questions at this juncture? Thank you, Commissioner Fai.
Chair Harrington, Latrice, I had a question. I guess it's along the lines of what Commissioner Rogers was asking on Slide nine. And I appreciate what, Tony, you just said, empowering this group, the modified consensus decision-making. Can you just speak more to that?
Sure. So modified consensus making is a slightly varied process than a Robert's Rules of Order process. I understand the intent of Robert's Rules of Order is intended to give every individual an opportunity to express their voice and their opinion before a decision is made. With modified consensus, there is more discussion and opportunity to change positions based on that discussion. And so instead of doing, using just an up or down vote, yay, nay, we ask people to identify where they're at in terms of, do they wholeheartedly endorse? Do they endorse with some concern, or do they have serious concerns that they want to bring to the forefront to be addressed before the process moves forward? So we've been using this modified consensus approach with our internal Equity Leadership Council and our Equity Leadership Council committees. And it has been, I think, very helpful so far in helping people to both have an opportunity to learn from different perspectives, but also come to a shared understanding and decision to, to move forward. I would also just add, it feels a little bit more accessible to individuals who are not as familiar with Robert's Rules of Order or as comfortable with Robert's Rules of Order.
Thank you. I appreciate that answer. I was just thinking, you know, with the community and that, and having a board member on that and having community leaders be part of this committee, just balancing the power dynamic and, and being, you know, with the modified consensus that there is no such thing as tiebreaker or commissioner or board member being a tiebreaker here, that this is sort of like super majority kind of thing, that it's not. People aren't going along with whoever the board member or the co-chairs are, that there is a consensus is true essence that we're all making decisions together, that nobody's overruling. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Treese.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Fai, for bringing up that issue, the decision-making process. I worked, I used that process through all of the Get Moving 2020 work. And it, it really was very positive in that it gives space to people to, to say, I, I need more information. I'm not 100% there. And it just, I think it really works well. The other point I'd like to add is, I, I appreciate in the charter the terminology endorsement, because it's, it's an interesting choice versus recommendation. I mean, I think that it, it, it holds true to, to what we're doing here in relationship to values, in relationship to change management around how the county operates. So I, I am in favor greatly in favor, frankly, of that, of that particular choice of words and that approach. Thank you.
Is there any other board discussion at this time? I'm just trying to work the topic to closure, because we have several more items for today. Okay, well, I'll, I'll close the discussion. I am really excited by the work from this co-creation committee. Thank you so much. You've really continued to raise the bar here, Ms. Tillman and Ms. Angie, in using this co-creation model. It's just amazing. You know, it's, it's a clear example of how our work culture here at Washington County has changed significantly. I want to once again give a heartfelt thanks to John L. Bell. Back in August of 2019, he started our journey as a Board of Commissioners in developing our own knowledge base and sharing our experiences with equity and advancing racial equity. He helped the board move forward with this work and with other partners, Coalition of Communities of Color, Apano, Latino Network, residents here in Washington County, developed the equity resolution that we subsequently adopted, which built an incredibly solid foundation for us to continue this work. And what a journey it is. And what this co-creation committee has brought us with this proposal for ACRE is another just powerful tool to help ensure that we, as a public-serving agency, do a better job of reducing and eliminating structural and institutional barriers that we may have in place that keep our community members from having the opportunity to thrive right here in Washington County. I am grateful for your proposal. I believe it is a very empowering one so that you can help us better do this work. We do not need something that is prescriptive, in my opinion. We need something that is very enabling, because we have a lot to learn, because we have several decades and some would say hundreds of years of improvements to make. One area that I know I have, I am wanting to learn more, and I know I will continue on this journey, is to better understand the healing process as we move forward. I began that journey as a Metro Counselor in the development of that strategy to advance racial equity. But I know that my journey continues. And I am grateful for our community to help me, not only as an elected leader, but as a person who loves Washington County to move forward. So I think to Ms. Tillman and to our speakers for today, thank you for joining us. Thank you for, for co-creating this. I, I think I've heard today, at least three of us, who are solidly in support of adopting your recommendation. And I hold out hope that all five of us will be in the affirmative in adopting this proposal moving forward. Thank you so much. Thank you for spending your time with us today, as well as, as part of this co-creation model. Bye, everybody. Take good care. I hope we did a good job of making you feel welcome today in our Zoom squares. Next, we'll move on to another aspect of better serving our community, including all voices and challenging ourselves. And that is the Reimagine Oregon Project. Once again, we have Ms. Tillman leading us in this experience, as well as other members of our team. And I'll leave it to you, Ms. Tillman. Thank you.
Great. Thanks again, Chair Harrington, for the opportunity to present to you and the board today. And we are circling back. I'm here with Ty Schweferman, who is a Community Engagement Coordinator. The vast majority, majority of his time is focused on supportive housing services. And since part of this project will focus on housing, we're really happy to have his leadership. And I believe at some point, we may be joined by Marcus Ford, another Community Engagement Coordinator, who is helping with the staffing and logistics for this. But he's also juggling multiple Zoom meetings at the same time. And so we hope he'll be able to join us shortly. But just as a reminder, and I believe we can go on to the next slide, the, this is a circle back from a conversation that we had in January about the way that the Washington County Board would like staff to engage in response to the Reimagine Oregon Project policy demands. And so we're coming back to you today with a proposed work plan that we shared in January in more of a draft form and had opportunity for engagement, conversation, and feedback from the board. And had a couple of conversations. So I believe that what we're proposing here today is reflective of your wishes, but we want to confirm that so that we can move forward from here and do the work. So what I would like to do is ask Ty to just do a brief refresher on what we talked about in January. And then we'll share the draft work plan.
Hi. Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Tash Wafferman. I work here at Washington County in Supportive Housing Services and Office of Equity Inclusion and Community Engagement. Just a brief refresher, and we can go to the next slide there. On the Reimagine Oregon Project, and this is some repeat information, but just a reminder, Reimagine Oregon Project, as presented to you by Marcus Monday in July of 2021, was founded and born out of the George Floyd protests. And the steering committee is comprised of highly regarded, accomplished, brilliant, educated, elected official, former elected official, running an organization that focuses on the well-being of vulnerable communities, including a specific focus on the Black community. This is, this work is really based off of their lived experience, their professional experience, their knowledge in thinking and academia that examines both the history of America, but also how it impacts the lives of Black people and Black Oregonians. And with that, I'm going to just say, I think we already have gone in-depth, looking at not only disparities in many significant areas and metrics. But as we work, as the Reimagine Oregon Project continues to work, leaders are finding and working towards solutions for dismantling systemic racism. So let's go to the next slide. So there's a series of policy demands that were presented to you previously. And just to remind you of some of the policy areas in which they're focused on. There are eight categories that are based off of, you know, areas that are continually researched by the Black community and leaders in, across the nation. They reference things like the Urban League State of Black Oregon Report, the Portland African American Leadership Forum People Plan, Coalition of Communities of Color Publications, and on and on. There's so much research that this work is based off. So these policy demands have grown out of that. And those are education, housing and homelessness, police and the carceral system, health and well-being, transportation, economic development, the legislative process, and community safety. So this work over a series of six weeks, the Reimagine Oregon Project asked elected officials, both on the federal, state, regional, county, and city governments, one simple question. What timeline do you commit to get this done? And who, in your jurisdiction, will lead it to the finish line? So that's the basic question that we are working off of today. So now, let's go to the next slide. Now, let's talk briefly about the timeline of Washington County's engagement with the Reimagine Oregon Project. This starts at the, in the spring of 2020, really prior to the creation of Reimagine Oregon Project. The, the boxes on the top are significant events in the white boxes. And in the, the green are significant actions of Washington County. And this timeline highlights really the Reimagine Oregon Project's emergence in the state of Oregon, but also the reaction to their work by the Washington County Board of Commissioners. Racial equity being the focus, much more broadly, of the Washington County Boards, while this is a focus really on the work focused on Black Oregonians. Participation in the Reimagine Oregon Project has included Chair Harrington and Commissioner Treese, who were invited to the Reimagine Oregon Project's elected official gatherings, while other officials also have been invited since then by the new director, who's, I think, should be marked in there as well in the late summer, where we have received more engagement and invitations since their staffing up. A much more comprehensive timeline, I think, has been shared, so I won't go into more depth at this time. So let's go to the next slide. All right. So it's important to highlight some of Washington County's commitments. One is funding public safety initiatives. The Board of County Commissioners funded body-worn cameras in staffing, staffing of both the Chief of Equity and Inclusion Officer and the Department being fully staffed. And then attending, which is the participation of Washington County leadership in the Reimagine Oregon legislators and elected officials summits, and including some planning sessions with elected leaders. And so this, you know, has come in several different forms. Some of this engagement has come from Marcus Monday, who is one of the Reimagine Oregon Project leaders, as well as Justice Raji, who is now the Director of Reimagine Oregon Project, who's been doing some of the more recent engagement. All right, we can go to the next slide. All right. So in July, the board provided some direction on the approach of Reimagine Oregon Project with centers the voices of Black, African American, and African staff to inform our policy options for the board. These actions have included 12 staff, the Office of Equity Inclusion and Community Engagement staff, who are currently engaged. This work has launched in a small committee to, on, in January. We have had two meetings, one in January, one in February. And with that, I also wanted to lift up one of our key leaders and organizers within our staff. Marcus Ford, who has done a tremendous job of getting this all organized and all, and communicating and bringing this all together. We've had two very successful meetings discussing both the background of Reimagine Oregon Project. We've had two very successful meetings discussing both the background of Reimagine Oregon Project and kind of doing that orientation, as well as starting to develop a work plan. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Latricia, who will go into more depth on our work plan and further comments.
Thank you so much, Ty, for that overview and reminder, refresher of our work and the commitments the Board has made to Reimagine Oregon Project up until this point. What I'd like to do is we move into talking about the proposed work plan is just to note that while there are eight focus areas of Reimagine Oregon Project, there were not eight demand areas for Washington County specifically. So our work plan specifically responds to the areas where there were policy demands for Washington County. And so we can move to the next slide. So we we did provide in the Board packet a more detailed work plan that you can refer to. So again, this is just the highlights. We're trying to manage two things. One is the urgency and the importance of a Washington County response to known inequities focused on the Black community in Washington County, but also manage that with the fact that the staff that we're engaging have full-time jobs. So they're doing this as part of their work. It is part of their work. It's important. It's their it's a priority, and there's a lot on people's plates. So we're trying to build out realistic timelines, so they may shift over time, recognizing those realities. The first one, we think we will come back to on in terms of our work plan, would be focused on health and well-being. And we think that within six months, we'd be able to come back to the Board with some policy recommendations as it relates to our COVID-19 relief and recovery work, our investments in culturally specific mental health care, and culturally appropriate maternal health programs. I'll just speak a little bit to the process that we're engaging with in this one, so you know that that cycle will continue for the other elements of our work plan. We are engaging with departments and with the leads of the various areas of the policy demands to gather data so that we understand what the inequities are that are currently being experienced by the Black community in these areas. And then we're also doing research, both on local models that may be culturally specific, focused on Black African American, African communities to inform policy recommendations. So we envision that that cycle will will inform our process going forward for most of the policy demands. So this one, because we do have great data from Health and Human Services, and they have been doing quite a bit of work looking at inequities and thinking that through. This is the one that we want to lead with. So we think six months, we'll be able to come back with some recommendations. Next slide, please. And then there were a number of policy demands related to housing. But again, because Supportive Housing Services has been doing great work, our Housing Department's been doing great work. We have Ty Schwerferman and other folks doing great work as it relates to equity and housing. We think we'll be able to come back with some policy recommendations on these in nine months. And so that includes implementing affirmatively furthering fair housing mandate, building community-based infrastructure, and so really thinking again about co-creation and investing in community-based capacity for housing supports. Next slide, please. This is housing continued. There was a request or policy demand related to homeless camp sweeps. And we think that the Board, well, we know the Board hasn't taken a position specifically on that, but is piloting some other approaches. And so we want to respond with a Washington County tailored policy response to that policy demand. And then investing in fair housing testing and evaluating coordinated access. Again, with data, we can look into what is an appropriate policy response to those demands. And we think we'll be able to come back to you in nine months with those. Next slide, please. There were policy demands related to the ways that different jurisdictions engage with public policy. These policy demands that came from Reimagine Oregon Project were very much focused on state-level policymaking. And so we want to work with our committee to explore how we can apply those policy demands at a county level. So including racial impact statements on legislative bills. We think this will dovetail really nicely with the Advisory Council on Racial Equity. So it's not necessarily standalone work, but it is work that can be coordinated, requiring community advisory board participation and rulemaking processes. Again, because that is so focused on state-level legislative process, we'll need to do some exploration around how that looks at a county level. And then equity advisors in all offices and departments. I think, again, that was focused at state-level work, but we know that there's interest within Washington County departments to build out departmental equity advisory and equitable community engagement, infrastructure, and support. So we think we'll have some recommendations coming back on that in 12 months. And the next slide. There were two. There were two policy demands that I am categorizing as public safety. But one, Reimagine Oregon Project categorized as an education demand. But since Washington County doesn't have any kind of policy authority over our education systems, and since the policy demand was focused on students and higher rates of expulsion or engagement with the criminal justice system in the juvenile area, we lump putting that under a public safety umbrella. And our juvenile department has been doing some work around restorative justice practices with educators and students. So we think 18 months, we can come back to you with some recommendations on that as well. In terms of public safety, the public safety policy demand for Washington County, we are meeting that currently. And that was the support that you all authorized for reimagining public safety projects. Marcus Ford is serving as a steering committee member in that process. And they're doing a larger community-based data collection process and participatory action research project to engage more external voices, community-wide, about what are the options or opportunities to address inequities in public safety from a community perspective. And so we'll learn from that as we go forward. And so we want to kind of move that one out so that there is an opportunity for that reimagining public safety project to do their research, to gather their options. And then we can grapple with what does that look like in terms of a Washington County policy response? And welcome, Marcus. We're happy to see you here. So in the next slide, I just want to refresh again. This is sort of where we're coming from. So next slide, please. This is where we're coming from. Ty talked about that. And I just wanted to connect sort of where we've been to where we're going in the future, which is the next slide. So this is really the summary slide of where we believe our work plan will take us. So next slide, please. Thank you. That's perfect. So we are here in March. We've convened our group in January and February. And we're here to get approval on the work plan. And with approval on the work plan, then our next time coming back to you would be in September with recommendations for health and well-being, December for housing recommendations, March for public policy recommendations, and then September of 2023 for public safety recommendations. So that is our proposed plan, our summary of our proposed plan, again, with more detail. And the additional detail in the in your packet also includes the acknowledgement of where Chair Harrington identified that she would be a lead in the public safety area. And Commissioner Trese identified that she would like to be a lead in the maternal child health area. And so we appreciate that. And and so at this point, we can move to the final slide, which is just asking for your approval for this work plan. Does it make sense? Is the timing right for you and any other feedback or discussion that you'd like to offer?
So Commissioners, this is our staff coming back to us with the proposal on how they can help us as the Board of Commissioners continue to engage with other partners who are sponsoring this Reimagine Oregon Project. Who has questions or comments on this proposed work plan for staff support for us? It could be a thumbs up as well. Thumbs up from Commissioner Phi.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Harrington. Let your show this is Ty. This is a great presentation. You're all on a roll this morning from the, you know, the previous presentation with our community leaders and then today. So I support. Go forward.
Vice Chair Willie.
Yeah, this is a great presentation. Thank you, Latricia. And it is always informative when I hear from you. I want to go back to Slide eight, and I think you and I've had this conversation before, probably the last time. We talk about invest in culturally specific mental health care, healing centers, maternal health programs. I would like to think that our public health perspective and certainly vision would be, this would not be just specific to our African American community, but to all of our racial equity impact. I'm not saying that very well, but that it would be that would be kind of the general thing that we would have. We would not have to be this specific in health and well-being. And so I guess that's I would like to think that we, this is perfectly fine for this, for what it is here. But again, I hope that in our public health perspective, that we are, we think unilaterally in everything that we do. And so I hope we're not sending a different message here.
Thank you for that comment, Commissioner Willie and Madam Chair. In response to that, what I will share is that I have been having conversations with leadership in Health and Human Services, specifically Nick Cohn, who is the Behavioral Health Division Manager. And there have been some changes in how Washington County has invested in behavioral health in the past with a significant amount of the responsibility for investing in behavioral health, health shifting to health share. One of the things that we recognized in our conversation is that while there are investments in other culturally specific behavioral health providers to meet the specific needs of the drivers of behavioral health challenges for other communities, there are not currently any investments in culturally specific organizations that identify as Black, African American, or African. There have been some investments, for example, in the, I think it's the International Psychiatric or Intercultural Psychiatric Program at OHSU, which provides services for immigrants and refugees specific to war trauma and acculturation issues. But like a focus on organizations like the Avil Gordley Center for Healing has not happened through Washington County. And we have also provided a list of African Americans, specific behavioral health providers, and are looking at how we can increase investments in culturally specific services. That's not to say that culturally responsive behavioral health care is not important and that all providers should be able to address the needs. But it, the importance of choice, so that African American, African Black individuals seeking behavioral health can access services through our county contracts with culturally specific providers is also important. And it is a current gap.
Okay, thank you. Marcus has something to contribute on this as well.
Hi, good morning. And just for the record, Marcus Ford, from a corner with the Office of Equity Inclusion and Community Engagement. Sorry, I'm late. But I wanted to add regarding Commissioner Willie's comments. When we talk about culturally specific, it's just that it's specific, right? And and it's important that we get specific, because if we take a unilateral approach, we can look at what we've done in the past. And we know that unilaterally outcomes are bad for people of color. And so if we take this culturally specific approach, the rising tide lifts all boats. And we'd have to start specific. And that's what we're doing here with this with this idea. And I'll be I'll be breathing that. That's all I want to say.
I appreciate your question, Commissioner Willie, because I had a very similar question. So a really helpful one. Thank you for asking that. Any other Board comments or questions at this juncture? Seeing none, are we thumbs up with having our staff bring this to us for action? Okay, great. We have at least four of us with thumbs up. So we have a majority that want to see us take action. Thank you very much to our speakers. Really appreciate your putting this together in support of Board requests on that. Is there anything to close that we've not covered yet, Ms. Tillman?
Well, I will just say, I just returned actually from a trip to Montgomery, Alabama, and Selma, Alabama, to commemorate the Selma Montgomery March for Civil Rights and learned a lot more. Every time I go, I learn about the history of slavery, lynching, segregation, and the way that racism has been baked into our national policy. And so I do really appreciate the opportunity and the focus that Washington County is allowing staff to have to inform you as we seek to dismantle those structures that have been built into our public policy for hundreds of years. So thank you so much for being on the on the right side of history and for being a partner with community in that work and allowing us to help continue to work in partnership as you continue to lead. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. I haven't been back to Selma since 2004. I realized that the other night in seeing a program through the national news. So my husband and I have put it on our visit list in the near term. So thank you for mentioning that. There are some great resources there to overcome prior history. Thank you. All right. Well, now on the agenda, we have time for a 15-minute break. So it is 10:19. So we will reconvene at 10:35, picking up five minutes late on our next topic to review the draft intergovernmental agreement with cities and nonprofits for informational technology, library services, and funding, also related to the Washington County Cooperative Library Services. So we'll see you back here in 15 minutes. Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. I can't hear anything at the moment. Can somebody say something?
Good afternoon.
Yay, okay.
Good morning. Sorry. It's good morning.
It's okay. It was just so quiet. I thought, oh, did I do something to my computer? So we'll get going then on our next topic. Welcome, Ms. Tattersall. Please take it away.
Good morning, all. Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. I'm Lisa Tattersall, and I am here today from Washington County Cooperative Library Services to review the draft intergovernmental agreements, or IGAs, that we have with our cities and nonprofits for library services and funding. And it's been a year long process, and I'm here to share the nearly final result. Next slide, please. So today I'll be covering a little bit of background and the overview of the process that we went through. Then I will share the highlights that are in the draft agreement. And then I will talk about the next steps after this work session today. Next slide, please. So next slide. So just as a reminder, we are a unique structure here in Washington County with our public library system. So libraries in our county are operated and funded by Washington County in partnership with three nonprofit associations and nine cities. Washington County operates WCCLS and the West Slope Library. And the nonprofits and cities in this presentation and also in the agreement are referred to as contractors. So you'll hear me referring to them as contractors through the presentation today, just to be in alignment with the agreement. Next slide, please. Our governance, ultimately, we are governed by you all, the Board of County Commissioners. The group I've been having the conversations with about the IGAs are with the Executive Board and the Library Directors together. The Executive Board for WCCLS is composed of the city manager from each of the nine cities that are members, and then the president of the Board of, of the nonprofit board for the nonprofit libraries. All of those representatives from the Executive Board and then the Library Directors at each of those, our member libraries, are the Library Director Board. And so together, we've been working for the last year on these draft agreements. And then in our governance IGA, the Executive Board is advisory to the Board of Commissioners. Next slide, please. I'm not going to read all of the lines on this slide, but I wanted to provide an overview of the meetings that we've had, the topics that were discussed, and also highlight where we've come to the Board of Commissioners along the way. And so we called this series of meetings the Cooperative Agreement Process, or CAP. And so in the spring of last year, we had a lot of background conversations around some of the things we may want to address either now or in the future. We talked about the ending fund balance strategy and target. And then in the September, we came back to the Board to really get your input on the ending fund balance and the library allocations. And then we took that back to the CAP group, where we dove into funding language and then reviewed other areas of the language that I'll be going over a little bit later. Next slide, please. So the draft agreement review, next slide, starts with, one of the changes we made with this new draft agreement is we're going from three IGAs into two IGAs. So we have a governance IGA that doesn't have an expiration date, and that outlines the roles and responsibilities for governance of the cooperative. That is not getting any changes at this time, but it's something that we will want to reevaluate and rework as part of the cooperative process that we're going to be, that we're going to be beginning in 2023. The other two agreements that we had were called the Public Library Services Agreement and the Network Agreement, and those were separate due to old history that I won't go into now. But we thought it'd make a lot of sense to merge those two into one agreement because they both had definition sections that weren't necessarily in alignment with each other. And IT ties in really deeply to everything else we do at WCCLS. So it just made sense to have all of those topics in the same agreement. And so the Public Library Services Agreement really focused on funding allocations and roles and responsibilities. The Network Agreement was all about IT. And I will just say real quickly, that is because we used to have members of the cooperative that weren't public libraries and just use our IT network. And this is an artifact from the 90s when library automation was a new thing. But we don't have those anymore. And so our only members are public libraries. And so we can just our only members are public libraries and so we can just merge those into one agreement and so now going forward assuming all of these agreements are signed, we will have two IGAs, the governance one and then the Public Library Network Services and Funding Agreement. And I'm gonna go over the highlights of that agreement next, in the next slide. So I'm gonna go through section by section and just share some highlights for the agreement and what's changed, so Section 1 definitions, we've greatly expanded the number of definitions added a lot more precise language than we had before. So I think that's been greatly improved in terms of clarity. The term of the agreement is July 1st of 2022 through June 30th of 2026. That is also when our current levy expires. Minimum operating requirements, we added this section to also incorporate new minimum conditions for public libraries that were added in the Oregon Administrative Rules, so we incorporated that. Next slide please. Section fours, Sections 4 through 10 focuses on the IT side of our partnership. Section 4 talks about the ownership of the network and that hasn't changed, ultimately, in our agreement, we say that the Board of Commissioners is the ultimate arbiter of decisions around anything related to our IT, our IT and network. Section 5, we added this section to really emphasize the importance of the confidentiality of the data we collect and the personal information we are custodians of and so we really wanted to bring additional clarity to the data management responsibilities that everyone has in this agreement, both WCCLS and the contractors and so we really made this much stronger, we pointed to relevant statutes in the ORS our Washington County Administrative Policies and WCCLS Policies. 6 and 7, we didn't see any significant changes in those sections. But they just talk about when we're available to support the network and what we do to backup data and make sure that it is available should something go wrong. Next slide please. So Sections 8 and 9 cover the roles and responsibilities for WCCLS and contractors in terms of the network, so we just improved the clarity in this section, updated some of the language to reflect the current IT environment and the tools and physical, even physical devices that we use and then really strongly emphasized the importance of maintaining security and data privacy, sort of flush that out as well. Section 10 is how we handle non-compliance with the agreement, misuse of resources or failure to maintain security protocols, so that's an important section to include. Next slide please. So that was the IT section, now Sections 11 through 14 are all about more what we think about as traditional library services and so in Section 11, we just really updated the language, so this is the services that WCCLS provides libraries and the community outside of the IT work that we do and so we really updated the language to reflect the current work that's being done. Improve the clarity of roles and responsibilities. And the same happened with Section 13, which is the library services that contractors are obligated to provide under the agreement, just more clarity. And also requiring libraries to identify as WCCLS members in our public communications and publicity materials. That's always really helpful since the levy has WCCLS on the ballot, it's not the local library name, it's Washington County and so it's important that in their publicity that we're all connected. Section 12 is a new section that we added to the agreement this time and that is requiring contractors to negotiate support for new initiatives with WCCLS before launching them, so we've had occasions in the past where a library would get really excited about a particular thing and then do it and then tell us after and then with the expectation that we would have to support it either staff or IT wise, which isn't always workable and impacts the availability of support for the other members of the cooperative and so we spent some time with the libraries working out sort of what would constitute more than normal support and then agreed that we would have a letter of agreement before WCCLS would commit additional resources to supporting those, so just a way for us to make sure we're all walking step by step together. Next slide please. This is a really new and important section to our agreement this time. The last agreement did not address the Civil Rights Act Title VI and so we are very excited to incorporate this in the agreement this time around and it requires all of our contractor libraries to be in compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, it clarifies the roles and responsibilities for compliance and then it also talks about how WCCLS will be supporting this Title VI support for libraries beginning in fiscal year 2223. So we'll be providing interpretation support, enhanced translation support, we already do some of that and other things, so making sure that we're not creating an unfunded mandate, we are backing that up with resources to support the libraries. And this is really exciting because we're going to have a consistent level of service for folks who don't speak English as their first language at the libraries. Next slide please. Okay, Section 15 is all about funding allocations and so we're getting a little more granular here. The 15.1 really talks about the purpose of funds, it's always a good reminder that any funds from Washington County are for library operations only. They are not for building, construction, expansion or land acquisition, so we did flush that out a little bit with our contractors with the Executive Board to make sure that language was really clear. 15.2 is a new section in the agreement addressing the fund balance and this reflects the fund balance strategy that the Board supported and the Executive Board recommended of having a minimum fund balance of three months of total annual expenditures. The next section talks about the library operations allocation, which is the primary allocation of funds, that's the primary source of funding for from WCCLS. The allocations remain the same as in fiscal year 2122 plus a 3% annual increase and that is throughout the term of the agreement. Next slide please. We talk about the revenue contingent allocation, which is another funding mechanism. It allows us to distribute additional revenue to contractors should actual tax revenue be higher than anticipated and we have already fully funded the WCCLS budget and the library operations allocation. We do have a minimum threshold of $25,000 in the agreement, so there needs to be at least $25,000 available to distribute before we will distribute it. And we had a lot of conversations with our contractors about that threshold and about how the distribution would be made between the libraries once that threshold had been reached. And what we would do is, the agreement came down to basically one taking that up, so say it was $30,000 dividing it by 15, which is the number of library buildings operated in county by contractors and so each library building would receive 1/15 of this total amount of money and this allocation was seen as a way to support the smaller libraries in our county with additional funds. If they were to get it based on their percentage of their normal allocation, it would be such a small amount as to not be very meaningful and so this was the approach the group agreed to go with. The last funding mechanism is the equity funds, this is also new and this is a separate pool of resources from the library operations allocation, which is the main funding mechanism and so those two don't impact each other. This pool of resources funds Title VI compliance support from WCCLS, so the cost of increased interpretation, translation. It also will fund a process to evaluate the funding structure and to help us plan investments that might be needed in the next levy cycle and I'll talk about those in a little bit. And then it's also going to fund other countywide equity initiatives that will be determined in partnership with our contractors. And then we've got a bunch of sections that have a lot of details on any adjustments that need to be made to funding, the distribution schedule and financial reporting. Next slide please. I did want to call out a really important section in this agreement, which is our process commitment. And I am seeing that the version of the PowerPoint being used is not the same one as in the agenda packet, so I will just add a little language. So one thing that's really important as we go through this process, so I, on this slide, it's the actual language that's in the IGA, the version that's in the agenda packet has a little bit of text above it that says what we will be as we go through this process, we will be framing it in terms of census data that will be really guiding the work that we do as we analyze governance and funding. We look at community indicators, data analysis from the census and the Board of Commissioners, your equity resolution is going to be guiding that process as well. So sorry about the slide situation, but that's what it said in the other slide, so. But I will run through what this says in the process here, so we are going to look at data analysis, community indicators from the census, for example, and doing some really important community and stakeholder engagement, we traditionally haven't done countywide community engagement in terms of libraries before, it's really been done at the local level, so we're excited about involving the community in these conversations. We are committing to evaluating our funding structure and recommending solutions to address inequities with future funding allocations and services and we also want to plan for structural and funding investments needed during the next levy and then we're setting aside funds to contract with firms to support this evaluation and engagement work. Next slide please. And then we have a lot of sections that are important to have in there, but I won't go over all of them, I will note that we did add updated insurance requirements for all of our nonprofit contractors after consulting with county council and risk. Cities are covered under other insurance requirements that are in the ORS. Next slide please. Okay, so next steps for the agreement, here we are today at our work session. Assuming, depending on what the Board shares today, if you are okay with this, the final agreement that's in the packet will go to cities and nonprofits for their local approval processes. At that point, so that'll be a couple of months and then we're scheduled to come back to you on June 7th, which would be a formal action item to authorize the county signing the agreements and then we'd have a couple of weeks where the agreement goes out for signatures through the contract process and the new agreements will take effect July 1st. Next slide please. But we're not done on July 1st, it's the really one milestone in a journey that we are all on together and so finalizing this agreement is really the beginning of a process to evaluate our funding and governance structures as a cooperative and so I really like this picture with this little boy turning the page, he's, you know, looking ahead to the next chapter. And so for us internally at WCCLS, that means that as part of, under the design, the future umbrella, WCCLS will be undergoing an organizational assessment this spring and summer, which I'm really excited about, we just sent out emails to potential firms yesterday. And so we're hoping to start that soon with an implementation of recommendations later in 2022 and that should hopefully create some structure for us to really be able to begin in earnest having conversations with the cooperative around funding and governance no later than the first quarter of 2023. All right, I think, next slide, but I think that's the last one. Yeah, all right. Any questions, comments?
Go ahead, Vice Chair Willie.
As usual, Lisa, great presentation, it's always good to hear what is going on and certainly in our libraries around the county and you and I've had a number of conversations recently about some of these things, so I appreciate certainly this information. I have a couple of questions back on Section 1 and I gotta flip back there, I'm looking at the other one right now.
Flip back there too.
Yes, Sections 1 through 3, minimum operating requirements, minimum open hours, you and I've had the conversation about that some of the libraries are struggling a little bit with keeping their minimum hours. Is, is this particular consistent with what our levy, you know, I think we said in our levy that we, that was recently passed that we would maintain, we would not cut hours, so is this consistent with that? How does that work, I guess?
That's a, yeah, a really important question to call out, the minimum open hours are 45 hours a week, which is, the libraries felt like was a reasonable threshold they could all maintain through this levy cycle and that is the same number of hours that we had in a previous levy cycle, so this keeps with that maintaining hours commitment that we made in the levy.
I guess my only concern would be that if some of our smaller cities were having trouble maintaining those minimum hours, it's going to fall on they're going to have to subsidize it through their general fund and I know that again, we've had that conversation and certainly the next the, the next reallocation and the next levy cycle, as you've indicated in '26. I'm sure that all of that will be addressed as well and I know we've had equity conversations as well, so it, it's good to see that we are going to be addressing those and certainly not trying to put any additional burdens on our small cities' general funds with that.
Can I just share one thing, we do have a a small subclause in that section that if a contractor is not in compliance with our minimum operating requirements they would notify us and then we would come to a mutually agreeable timeline and plan to come into compliance, so there is that opportunity for conversation around if a library isn't able to maintain hours, that we would be able to talk about communicating that to the public.
Okay, that's great and then on Section, we've got, it's 11 to 14, but it's specifically referring to 14 and I guess the question would be when you said requires contractor libraries to be in compliance with Title VI I'm assuming those are libraries that are not ran by cities, are, a couple of are independent, because our cities would have had to be in compliance with Title VI all along, right, or is this just something we're pointing out?
It's something we're pointing out, I think I'm not intimately familiar with each city's level of Title VI compliance, but I do know that from an operational standpoint, an everyday patron experience walking into the library, it is and for cities and or nonprofits, it's likely that you could come into a library and not see the options available to you for assistance in your own language, so I think all cities have, I would assume have Title VI compliance plans, but we didn't dive into the details of those but really this is pointing out that we operationally want to offer those services to everyone who comes into the library.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, okay, I, I think I, I get it, I didn't understand it correctly, so thanks for that clarification and, and the good great presentation, thank you.
Krishna Rogers, you're up next.
Thank you. Lisa, I don't think we all give you enough credit in navigating what is really a difficult situation, a negotiation between the cities, so I want to do that right now, I mean, it, it's really hard, they all have different ideas on what the operating costs are and what we should fund and the difficulty for you is amplified by the fact that we don't own the buildings, they do. We're just providing some, some funding and so if they choose to do or not do certain things, it's difficult unless the agreement is, is in place to somehow force them to do it, so that's my commendation, I wanted to say that, but I have a more basic question, at times I've encountered over the years, cities want to know what are their options, if they don't like what we do and they don't like the cooperative, it would be a mistake not to be in it, but you know, people do different things. Is, is there a withdrawal provision and a non-taxing provision if they so chose and said I, I don't like my distribution, I think I'll go it alone and I'll, I'll, I'll do that, do, do we do any work around that? I know in other areas I've, I've done that and they became persuaded very quickly that that's probably not the best solution to explore but do you have, between us kids, I guess, and I know this probably, do you have those candid discussions as to what people would be losing if they didn't participate in this cooperative?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll speak to the discussions first and then I'll talk about some of the points in our agreement, but I do feel like all of our contractors really do see the value in that partnership and pooling of resources. You know, the shared collection of physical items is, I think, 1.6 million items that people have access to and so if someone were to leave the cooperative they would be down to just the items held by their local library and not able to access that huge amount of resources, same with our digital collection, which is very robust, extremely well-used and and funded at a tune of, I think, 3.5 million in this coming fiscal year is what we're requesting. So I, but, but there are also, there's always give and take with a shared system, right? And it comes with a lot of benefits and it also comes with some constraints. And so I think we are pretty good about having those conversations in terms of, and so I don't see anyone. I haven't heard any jurisdictions talking about wanting to leave the cooperative. But we do have sections in the agreement on a couple of things with ending the agreement. And I'm going to, for one, one thing we talk about is if someone were to withdraw from the agreement, what happens with the records for all of their books that are in our system? So that's a very technical thing, but that is something we need to address. And so we talk about that and then let me scroll down.
Lisa, I just interject. I haven't heard, other than, from time to time, I've been pushed by various cities to say, gee, you know, maybe it would be better because of our distribution numbers just to not be part of this, because we're, we're a subsidization of others. And now we're doing subsidizing. To which I responded, well, we all subsidize if we're in the system. But I, I, I just want to make, I haven't heard that recently, but I have in the past where people in their own mind are kind of trying to calculate benefits. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
To me, it's a no-brainer and it's an easy one to say. How could you come to any other conclusion that the cooperative is the best approach? But, you know, I mean, you've got to be prepared for that. So I'm pleased that you say you are doing that. And I mean, people like to be sold that they're getting value and so that's great. I'll stop at that, yeah.
Okay, and then I'll just share, so we have section 16 is termination. And so contractors have the right to terminate the agreement with 60 days written notice if the contractor determines in good faith through an open public process that the public interest in its jurisdiction or area of service would be served by such termination. So that's the language that we have in there. And then if a contractor terminates, the county shall distribute funds to the contractor prorated to the date of termination. And that's it.
Any other commissioner conversation or questions, comments on moving forward? Commissioner Fies thumbs up. Commissioner Trees' thumbs up, Commissioner Willie as well. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. I'll close with, thank you very much for this continued work. Lisa, you're really excellent in everything that you do and all aspects of your job in working in partnership with our other communities. And I particularly want to thank you for providing needed information. And that includes needed information that I have needed or was able to draw on, thanks to you, with discussions for one of our smaller cities last year and ongoing. We were able to relate and reflect back their needs and their problems that they were facing and also committed to do additional work while adhering to the voter-approved levy. And while we may not like reality, we still have to accept it for what it is. Your presentation today, including the slide that you highlighted as in the packet, but wasn't on the screen at the time, did reflect back those very commitments that we made last year and that we've been acting on. So thank you for that bravery and the excellence in service delivery and your continued effort to ensure that we are providing excellent service to our partners and to the diverse community here in Washington County. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair.
Let's move forward.
Thank you, Board. Really appreciate your support.
Thank you. We'll move on now to item six on the agenda, excuse me, item seven, Conciliation and Law Library Financial Update and Review of Funding Formula. And we'll turn it over to Ms. Erin Calvert, one of our Assistant County Administrators. Welcome, Erin.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Good morning to you and to the board. As mentioned, and for the record, I am Erin Calvert with the County Administrative Office. And I'm here today to provide a presentation on the funding and financial picture of the Law Library and Conciliation Services. And this presentation is a culmination, of course, of planning with a number of staff from the Law Library, Juvenile and Conciliation Services, Finance, and of course, the Government Relations Team. Next slide, please. The purpose of today's work session is to review the funding formula and the financial projections of both departments. Your packet included a memo that was submitted to your board on February 25th. It's really actually a summary of much of what we'll review today. And then there was a memo from Law Librarian Lee Van Duser that was written in October of 2020 and a Conciliation Services memo written by Conciliation Supervisor Cindy Carr, also in 2020. And both outline a lot of the historical background and funding challenges and service delivery for both departments. Today's presentation will include a high-level overview of the historical funding formula and board action in 2012 and then the work session in your board direction in January of 2021 and the funding projections for both departments. The policy question before you today is whether your board wants to continue with the current funding formula that you temporarily directed in January of 2021. And then we'll have time for questions as well. Next slide. So prior to 2011, both departments operated with much more local control and that meant that counties could adopt fees that were commensurate with service delivery and the inflation and then the cost of doing business. And while there were many benefits to that and having local control over funding and programming, the legislature became concerned that 36 counties essentially had 36 different ways of doing business and it created a lack of consistency across the state. House Bill 2710 was passed at this time and this changed the funding so that the county received a portion of the funding allocated by the legislature, which was based at the time on a percentage of the 2009 to 2011 biennium filing fee revenue that was generated. And unfortunately, at that time, there were concerns about this loss of local control and the funding allegations. And those concerns became a reality as the amount allocated by the legislature has remained relatively stagnant over the last decade. Next slide. In early 2012, Senate Bill 1579 was passed and that's where the legislature gave the funding allocation decision for departments to the, to the Board of County Commissioners. Excuse me, and that was later codified under statute. And the statute really says that the Board of County Commissioners and consult with the presiding judge could allocate up to one-half of the state funding for law libraries for the purpose of providing conciliation and mediation services. So it was at this time that the County Administrative Office, the presiding judge, the law librarian and conciliation supervisor asked the board to approve a funding formula to help address the concerns around the budget and the service delivery for both departments, but especially at the time for the conciliation program. The formula took the state funding that was allocated to both departments and then directed 60% of the total allocation to conciliation and 40% to the law library. The law library at the time had built up a sizable fund balance and they were thinking that this could provide a slow drawdown of funds without a disruption in service to either department. The board passed the funding formula and then staff agreed at the time to return to the board if funding became an issue. So then, as you know, in fiscal year 2020 and 2021, the law library experienced an unplanned funding reduction of 25%. So not only did this have an impact on the law library, but due to the funding formula, it would have resulted in an unintended reduction to conciliation services and a significant impact to service delivery. So during that work session in January of 2021, we made a presentation and request to temporarily discontinue the funding formula and return to state appropriations for each department. And your board did agree to temporarily discontinue that for the current fiscal year at the time, which was 2020, 2020, 21, and the following year, which is our current fiscal year, and then a promise to return to your board for their planning. That brings us here today. In looking at the budget productions of each program, the staff are recommending that the board continue with state appropriations and that we continue to work through our government relations team in lifting up the need for additional funding from the state to continue the important service delivery to the community. Next slide. So this slide takes a look at the law library revenues, expenditures and fund balance over time. The blue bar on the graph represents revenue, the orange bar expenditures, and the gray line is the fund balance. For reference, you can see the height of the law library fund balance in the 2011, 2012 year when the funding formula was put in place. You can also see that post-2012, the blue bar revenue drops and then stays relatively level with more reductions in subsequent years while the orange bar expenditures continues to increase. When the board made the temporary funding change in 2021, that bumped funding slightly, but you can see it still isn't keeping pace with the increasing expenditures and that the gap continues to grow through the projection of fiscal year 25, 26, when the fund balance is projected to be expended. Next slide. This graph takes the same look at the conciliation program fund and looks back to 2013, same key, blue bar revenue, orange bar expenditures, gray bar is the fund balance. So over time and funding, the program has adjusted both staffing and service levels to provide as much as possible. But they're currently operating with just four FTE, which is a service level equal to 2014. So we also know in conciliation, the service or the complexity of cases has continued to increase. And conciliation has implemented some very conservative spending practices to stretch their fund balance as far as it can go. But as the graph shows, the next fiscal year illustrates expenditures to again be far above the revenue line and we're concerned about service and staffing levels beyond this fiscal year. Next slide. So before posing the policy question back to your board, it's worth noting that both programs are in need of additional funding, even to continue the current service level. Under your board's direction, the Government Relations Team has been working with your board, the Washington County Legislative Delegation, partner counties and other stakeholders to increase the awareness of the importance of services to the community and work to identify improved budget investments. And then we're also looking to do more analysis on the service level impact that a lack of additional funding could mean. So with that, I will, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, thoughts? Go ahead, Commissioner Rogers.
This has always been an interesting one in which we've had funds in the past. But Erin, not that I'm closing the Law Library, but it's my understanding that it's not heavily used. So what, what is all this costing us? What's the usage? And is there some other alternative? I know we've tried for limited operating hours and openings. For some people, that doesn't satisfy them. But at some point, we are a people's business and you have to make decisions to say, I guess we're not open every hour. You might like us to be open because of our budget constraints. Tell me about the financing around this.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Rogers, for the question. I don't have a current, current data for you, but in 2020, so the last, for the fiscal year of 2019, 2020, the law library served around 5,000 people and roughly that was 30% attorneys and then 70% non-attorneys. So I think, you know, the, the use, I don't have good data yet for our, you know, pandemic response, but we'll tell you the three FTE have worked really hard to be open as much as possible for in-person hours. And then given, you know, different dynamics, they've continued to provide service over the phone and internet. And they've expanded some of their technologies and ability to do that. So I'll be sure to get some current data for you. I know they're tracking that use.
Erin, is that unique visitor, do you know, or is that just visits?
I think it's just visits, not unique.
So if I was a prolific attorney next to the Law Library, I might go in there every day to look at something. So I could be 300 plus visits, just me alone.
Yeah, and of course, you know, the law library's mission is just to provide equal access to justice for all. So yes, I think there's a lot of repeat customers in there, but it does provide a very essential service.
Any other commissioner thoughts? Or comments? So I will just close before asking for thumbs up on the recommendation that while those users may not be unique, what they have in common is that they have a need, a need for that equal access and justice for all. But for having access to the law library, whether it's in-person collections or digital collections, they would not have a solution here in Washington County, a community of over 600,000 people. We've also had the opportunity over these last several months to hear from various attorneys who are small business owners and how access to the law library has helped them do their work in service to members of our community for that equal access and justice for all. So that's why I think this is a fundamental service for a county to provide in our responsibility for the various courts that we have here in Washington County. So with that, I know I'm thumbs up in continuing this funding recommendation. So is Commissioner Trees, Commissioner Fie, Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Willie. And I'm grateful for your continued work, Erin, so that we can learn more about the service delivery model and how we might be able to chart a better future course in service to the public we serve.
Thank you very much. I'll pass it on to the teams as well for their great work in delivering the services. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you so much. So folks, we're ahead of schedule, which is a nice thing. Ms. Angie, should we break for lunch early? Or can we slot in one of the other topics?
We could slot in the misstep topic. However, Janelle Bell was going to be part of the presentation and unfortunately, he's not available until the time. So staff would prefer he's here, so it's not an ideal situation.
Especially since we've done this to him once before.
Yep. And in consulting with Mr. Roberts, he does feel that the other item is 60 minutes. So I would suggest breaking for lunch.
Great. Well, then, would, would you like us to just reconvene at 1 o'clock, time certain, since we have an external member? Great, all right. So you'll have a slightly longer lunch today, folks, and we will reconvene our work session at 1 PM. All righty, thank you.